Exactly.
Let's go.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Oregon Village Board. This Monday, March 6, 2017, at 5:00 p.m. I'd like to call the meeting to order and request roll call, please.
Paulie?
Here.
Hundra?
Here.
Redhauer?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Here.
Thank you, here. Item three, discussion possible action regarding senior center director recruitment. Item A is review of the recruitment schedule. So, now trustees, take a look at that. Any comments from staff?
It's somewhat tied into D that I wanted to note that I'm asking the village president and the chair of the personnel committee to be on the screening committee. And that'd be April 25th and 26th, and then the finalists being interviewed on May 3rd. If you check your...
Yeah, those two days worth.
Okay.
Yep.
Good, thank you. So, we are hoping to, you know, proceed with placing the ad tomorrow and get on with the process.
Okay. Any questions from trustees on the...
I have one.
Or on the recruitment schedule, I should say.
On the sheet, yes. The 120, bold point is highlighted, bold face.
So...
Is that because it's new, or...
I revise it, yeah. This is revised from what was in the packet. I added that to that. And basically, I added maintain good working relationships with communities which are members of the senior center service agreement.
Very good, thank you.
Yep, and I just caught a type one to this one.
So, that puts on the revised job description that's before us, revised copy at our places. Are there any other questions or comments on this? We don't need to take action to approve it.
There was one area where required knowledge on the job description was a bachelor's degree in social work. Then there was another spot where it said that it was not necessary.
Oh, maybe you're talking about in the job ad.
Yeah.
Yeah, it says preferred in the job description.
Right.
Yeah.
And in the job ad, I think it says not required. Oh, which is the same language.
Same thing. Versus saying required, right, in both positions, or both documents.
I'll move approval.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from trustees? I've got a motion to second to approve the job description, revised job description for senior center director. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item C is placing the ad for this position.
I'll motion to approve the ad as written.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, see anything from staff?
Nope.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item D is proposed screening committee members, list village president, chair of personnel, public safety and protection, which is Jeannie, three members of the council on AG executive board, the town of Oregon, and the town of Rutland.
I'll make the motion that that would be the screening committee.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. When I read that, I'm certainly fine with this. Would it be wise to have a senior who uses a senior center a lot on this also, or not?
Nelson? I mean, we have council on AG members on there.
So, that fits that, okay.
Okay.
I was actually getting one. Active with the seniors.
Okay, I wasn't sure if they were, so, okay.
Thank you. I thought it was important to have somebody, I think it's gonna be Philip from the town of Oregon, and we need to get somebody from the town of Rutland, because there are community members that are participating in the center with us, so.
Okay, good. So, I have a motion to second to approve the proposed screening committee members. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Okay, that goes to item four, public appearances. Item A, public hearing for the plan development for the five-year extension for general development plan at 131 West Richards Road. This is a Dorn Hardware property. I would like to open that hearing. So, if you'd like to come forward and kind of summarize what you're looking for, please. Good evening, and welcome.
Yeah, they're requesting an extension. Basically, what's happening is there's a family involvement. There's one, one of the brothers has got the beginnings of Huntington's disease, and so he doesn't, he's having trouble, he has some cognitive troubles. His wife is working with them. I think she's gonna get power of attorney sooner than later.
Okay.
And that is really the basic reason for the extension at this point. They could, they could basically vote him out if they wanted to, but it's a family dynamic, so they'd rather not unless they really have to. So, that's really the reason that they need the extension. They're, they're ready to go, we're basically ready to go. That's, that's, that's really it. That's what they're working on right now.
Okay, okay. Thank you. So, any questions or comments from trustees? Just a couple things I'd say I've heard. People that know about this are very positive about it and pleased with what you're doing. They also say, will there still be a hardware? That we love that hardware spot.
There will be hardware store there.
Just want that on TV.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else from staff?
So, the last time we extended the GDP until 2018, this is now lobbying them to do the full build-out, another five years.
Yeah.
There's a distinction there.
Anything from trustees? Okay, so I will, anything else to comment? You'd like to make?
I don't think so. We're, we're ready to go.
Okay, thank you. I will close the hearing then and read item three, discussion possible action. This is to consider extending the time for implementing a plan development slash general development plan from five years to 10 years relating to the plan development, general development plan approved by ordinance number 16-29 on September 9, 2016, submitted by Victor Dorn Corporation, Dorn Plaza mixed-use redevelopment, property owner for the property at 131 West Richards Road. Our recommended motion is to approve resolution number 17-06, extend time for developing lands in the general development plan approved by ordinance number 16-29, Victor Dorn Corporation Redevelopments. Any motion, please?
So moved.
Second that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. We'll go to item B, now it's just public hearing. Terry Leader, agent for Ziggy's Barbecue Smokehouse LLC, has filed an application for class B permanent malt beverage and class C wine license with the village clerk for the village of Oregon for the property at 135 South Main Street, known as Ziggy's Barbecue and Ice Cream. Item one notes that we have the meeting minutes and conditional use permit in agreement for reference in our packet. So, I open that to public hearing, please, and if you'd like to come forward. Meeting, so welcome.
Thank you, good evening. So, before, you know, we're requesting a license for the class C and B license for beer and wine. We feel that Ziggy's, with the barbecue and the beer would be a good, good fit together as we watch many people come in and ask us if we have beer or wine. We have to sometimes watch them go out the door, so that's why we are applying for the application, applying for the license here today.
Okay. Other questions from the trustees, comments from staff?
The only thing, I just want to make sure the board understands what the premises description is for, for the area.
Okay.
And there is an attached drawing of the property that shows both the building and the parking area and the patio area. And so, as I understand, the premises description, I wanna...
It's the second, it's the second page of the application if you're looking for it. I'm not sure what it is.
So, as I understand, the proposed premises description would include the interior of the building in its entirety, the outdoor patio, and the parking lot. When we, when I noted that during my review, I was in touch with village staff, and one of the questions I had was, is, what does the conditional use permit authorize? Because there was a conditional use permit approved for the outdoor entertainment, and I couldn't remember. We looked at that, and that conditional use permit did include the, let me find this. So, with respect to the, well, with, well, there's, I want to start with the patio. So, with respect to the, so the outdoor commercial entertainment use includes the outdoor dining area, smoker and, and weekend cultural events. And then there's a reference on the map with the conditional use permit, the parking lot area was referred to as, you know, weekend cultural events area. I'm not 100% sure what weekend cultural events means, but I, I think what I want to do is make sure the board recognizes that if the alcohol beverage application is approved as presented, then, you know, the, the alcohol would be allowable among other places in the parking lot. So, if there are any concerns about that, this would be your opportunity to address that. That was my only comment.
So, I have just a question in terms of, when I think about outdoor areas, my only real experience with drinking in outdoor venues is Regent, and Regent Street for badge games. And the way that they've dealt with those outdoor areas is there's snow fencing and there're sheriffs that are posted at the entrance, and it's very clear to me that the alcohol is being controlled in that parking lot. I can see how it's being controlled. If alcohol was allowed to be served on the patio and in the, in the driveway, how would you control the alcohol that's being consumed to make sure that people aren't coming and going from the patio with or without, or sharing it with people that shouldn't have it?
Well, one of the things is, you know, we're always going out, I mean, obviously, waitress taking out food all the time and whatnot, they're always gonna be keeping an eye on people and letting them know, but I mean, as far as the fence, we don't have anything like that to actually contain them. But, you know, we are gonna be keeping closed tabs on every waitress that goes out, you know, to a table. They're gonna make sure that, you know, nobody's walking away with a beer. If there's an empty beer, they're gonna be picking it up and, you know, putting it in the trash indoors, things like that. But I guess that would be one of the discussions, you know, that we would need to come forth and, you know, get figured out, I guess.
Jeff, we, we see this similar to Senior Pepper's. Holstein's in the form, whether they have a situation where they're serving alcohol out on the patio or public area or outside, I guess.
So, I want to be clear that I'm very much in support of this. Personally, I think this is a great idea. I definitely see how it goes with your venue, and I think it fits very, I personally think it fits very well with Oregon. So, my orientation is how do we make it work, and how do we make it safe? You'll see later in the agenda, it seems like we have no end of problems with underage drinking at establishments in town.
Right.
And that's frustrating. To deal with the ones that currently have liquor licenses is one issue, to introduce new ones is another. And I think if we don't learn from what we're going through on the one hand, then we're setting ourselves up to fail on the other. So, the only reason I'm asking these questions is to try to help us get to a place where you can serve alcohol in a responsible way, and you're not at risk. Because we're protecting the residents and especially the underage drinkers in town. So, back to Mike's point, one of the differences I see between Seniors and Ziggy's patio is Seniors is about three feet up above the ground, surrounded by ornate, ornate fence, and Ziggy's is flush to the ground with actually arbor vida on the edges. And at night, I can only imagine that, that arbor vida gets pretty shady, and it'd be easy for things to pass between the trees and for somebody to not even know that that had happened. So, I'm wondering if maybe it would make sense, if you're gonna serve on the patio, to think about that patio space from a standpoint of, of protection. Because the last thing you want is an underage kid getting into trouble drunk, and it turns out he got his alcohol from your establishment.
Correct.
That'd be bad for your reputation and bad for you personally.
Right.
So, I'm just trying to think ahead.
Yep. Yeah, we plan on putting more lighting out there, because it is kind of a little bit on the darker side at nighttime, I do agree. So, we'll be working on some kind of proposal or something, you know, to get more lighting in there, definitely.
What do you think about some, some fencing?
I, I think if it would fit the building, we'd have to, you know, obviously talk with the owners of the building, you know, first off, but if there was some type of fencing that would fit the building, I would be up for that, and if they were up for that as well. I know that with the, with Exhibit A, what they proposed for weekend events, you know, we had possibly talked about putting fencing up in that area and using it for like, like if we wanted to have like a country band or something come in, you know, and, or some type of event of what nature that would allow alcohol to be out there, you know. We want to have a kids' event and, and allow, you know, beer and alcohol to be out there with all the kids, but I know on the, I think that's the north side. Yeah, the north side that it shows for Exhibit A.
Yeah, I would think at the very least you'd wanna, if I was gonna sketch this out, I see your hand, I apologize, but if I was gonna sketch this out and I was gonna have a weekend event, I, I probably would take a note from Regent Street, and I probably would put snow fence up, and I probably would have security guards at the entryway, because I think it sends a good, sends a strong message. First, it's not gonna be easy to get in and out of here, and second, someone's watching. But at that, I think I'll, I'll quiet down and let Matt talk.
I just wanted, you know, I, I was trying to go back in my mind and remember the discussion we had on the conditional use permit for this property with respect to the outdoor area. And I remember the discussion of the patio, and I, I think there was some discussion about the neighborhood. I honestly don't remember the parking lot. I was really surprised to see that the conditional use permit authorizes use of the parking lot for what are referred to as, I think it says weekend cultural events. And so, my sense is that the patio, I, you know, I appreciate, you, you guys need to think about it, but at least from a, from the scale of the kind of activities that might be taking out, place out there, it's, it's likely to just be people who are dining, right?
Correct.
And, and so, the, the impact on the surrounding neighborhood strikes me as within what's kind of been expected with respect to the conditional use approval, and, and I understand you need to address it from an alcohol standpoint as well. To me, the bigger concern is the parking lot. I don't remember the discussion that took place there, but from a neighborhood impact standpoint, if you combine, you know, weekend, live music, and alcohol, and so on, there's nothing in that conditional use permit right now, for example, that would restrict that from a timing standpoint. I don't see anything in there that says you can't have that until midnight. And so, it seems to me that, that this is your opportunity to, to think through not only the patio, but from my perspective, the bigger issue is the parking lot. You could put a lot of people in that parking lot. And you could have a lot of people with, you know, some kind of an event that might go late in the evening. So, I would, that, that to me was what really jumped out as the, the concern.
Yeah, I think I saw 10:00 p.m. someplace.
Well, that, I don't see that in the permit, though.
It's in, it was in their narrative that I submitted, yeah.
Right, it's in, it's in some of the materials. My thought would be, if, if I were in charge, I'd say, let's have them work with the, the plant commission on the conditional use permit issue as part of any alcohol licensing for that parking lot area to make sure everybody's satisfied with, what are we talking about in terms of the size and the scale and the hours and potential impact?
So, if you read, this is, this is in the CUP.
Yeah, what does it say?
So, hours of operation restrictions, the maximum permitted hours, you know...
Indoor.
Yep, the maximum permitted hours of operation for all activity, including culture events, are, shall be from...
Eight to 10.
Yep, and then it says no outdoor speakers or any other form of outdoor sound application are permitted at any time.
Well, I guess we addressed that.
Yeah, that was a mic, that was a mic, so I didn't have anything, so, yep.
All right.
So, I think that there was a concern with the neighborhood having amplified music out there.
Yeah. Again, my memory is the whole discussion was on the patio.
Yeah.
I just don't remember the parking lot being part of the discussion.
Somebody who wrote this did a good job.
I guess.
Could you repeat that once more?
Oh, sure. It's, it's in the CUP.
Yep.
It's, so basically, the, Matt's concerned about it going past midnight, it's 10:00 p.m. It says...
Outside.
And what about the music or...
It can't, it can't be amplified. No amplified music.
So, can you do a band out there without amplification?
Not, um...
Seems like that might be a problem.
Yeah, yeah. Is that on both north side, parking lot?
The whole property.
Yeah, the whole property.
Outside.
I thought I didn't read it correctly, that I thought it was just patio side.
Yeah. So, does that speak to going to plant commission to talk to them?
Well...
Because that's what that would entail.
So, there's kind of two separate issues. If they want to change that, that has to go to the plant commission.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that, that has to go through the, a conditional use permit amendment process.
Yeah, alert, you gotta notify the neighbors.
Yeah.
So, at least the board, though, understands what the parameters are in terms of, from a zoning standpoint and a conditional use permit standpoint, they can use the outdoor patio, they can use the parking lot, subject to those time limitations and, and no outdoor amplification.
Yeah.
So, then you're just left with any other questions you might have about alcohol service in those areas.
Yeah, okay. Chief, you, you want to speak?
I just wanted to say the board should probably also consider being consistent with the other places in town as well. I think anytime that we have an outdoor venue, we were requiring some type of fencing that goes around there, and I don't know that that patio on the south side necessarily has anything but a wood fence, correct? Through their...
In the back, yeah. And then arbor vida's and the wood hedging.
Then the parking lot, I think, is somewhat fenced in on partial areas of it, but if you're gonna have an outdoor venue out there, then there's access definitely through the, the driveway area of that as well, so.
Right.
Maybe the board would consider, if they, if they grant this, that the security plans have to be approved by me beforehand, so.
Yeah. And it seems like if you have a band, would you charge admission, then?
Um...
It seems like if you do, you would want to have a fence, I would think.
Right. Yeah, we haven't got that far yet as far as if we would or not, but definitely a fence was on the table, you know, amongst us all.
Yeah, okay.
Trying to maintain, you know, I'm not letting underagers in or, you know...
Yeah.
Letting people out with beer, you know, walking off the premise, so.
Yeah. So, questions or comments over here, anymore? Jerry?
No, I, I think if we give the chief the authority to the security plans, I think that, that pretty much wraps it up and makes it a secure situation.
Yeah.
And they already checked with the neighbors, and that was the question I was gonna have, but I didn't go to that planning meeting, so.
They, well, when I mentioned the neighbors, they, they were at the plant commission meeting for the CUP.
Right.
Yeah.
All owners of the...
That notice of the...
Right.
Kind of, it's not amplified, it shouldn't affect anybody.
But I think you're, you're saying you're not gonna be hard having a band that's unamplified, right?
Right. Most of it's acoustic, you know, just playing the instruments, and the only instrument would need be need are the, one small amplifier, you know, for the singer, you know, but, you know, that's, that's the only thing that's required.
Yeah, so, I, I'm with Jeff, too. I support this. I think it enhances your business and would be good, but I think it's kind of murky right now as far as the culture events, practical, and how that plays out with the need for security plan fencing, that type of thing, the limited hours and amplification. So, I think tonight, you have to decide if you want us to go ahead and vote on the license, knowing that it may not work in that parking lot.
Right.
Given the current restrictions. Or you can hold off on the license right now, go to the plant commission, and bring these, the fencing and that type of thing to them, and, and then modify the conditional use permit, right? Am I getting that in the right direction?
One thought, if they wanted to move things along more quickly where they can, you could approve the license for the building and the patio area, and then give them an opportunity to work with the chief on a plan for the parking lot, come back with an amendment
Okay.
To the premises description that covers the parking lot, and with a little more information about how that would work.
But, but they're probably not gonna want to even worry about that, because if you don't have amplified, amplified music, you probably don't even care about using that in our parking lot.
Right, well, right. I mean, it would be in a future, you know, near future, you know, to try to get a amendment and a security plan put together, you know?
Yeah.
Because summer is coming, and if we want to do something like that, you know...
You'd go back to the plant.
We would, we would then, you know, proceed and...
Yeah. So, how often would you want to have band?
Um, I, you know, once, twice a month, maybe.
Okay.
It's not a lot, you know, or maybe a car show or something, you know, like have the racers come in from the Oregon racetrack, you know?
Yeah.
Those certain events like that, you know, it's something that help, you know, bring, you know, and like if I did something like that, I don't know if alcohol would be really involved with it, but it'd be more for the kids to come in and, you know, see the race cars and everything, and then maybe the adults can go in and get a beverage, but, you know, different events like that is what we're looking at.
Yeah.
So, we're trying to be more for family oriented, so.
Yeah. And I asked about a number of times you'd have a band, because you could ask for a specific number of events that would involve a band, instead of just have it wide open and we could do it every Friday and Saturday night.
Okay.
You know, so if you ask for, I don't know, four or six, or whatever you might choose, then the neighbors would know what it was going to be.
Okay.
They still have the, the issue of amplification and the hours...
Right.
To, to work on, but...
Okay.
I guess I would, I like, if you do, I like Matt's idea of do the, the premises, the building and the patio on the, on the south, get that done.
Right, yep.
If you're satisfied with that, knowing it may not work in the parking lot.
Right.
If you want to go ahead with that, then we can certainly do that.
Yeah, let's go ahead and proceed with that.
Okay.
So, the motion would be to approve the license with, with a modified premises description to exclude the parking lot.
Yeah, okay.
I have one quick question. Chief, do you have anything else you'd like to add before we vote on this or make the motion?
No, I mean, the only other thing, the concern I have is, is that south patio is, there's no real restrictions on that. There's, you know, they can hand it over a bush or just come right up to the table.
Yeah.
With only the, the waitresses, you know, checking as they go out, that's, that's not very good close supervision, in my opinion, but...
Yeah.
We do have cameras outdoor as well, though, you know, we can modify and...
Yeah. I would encourage you to talk to building owners about getting a fence behind those bushes, so there's some separation, the hard surface patio, and maybe having it three or four feet, not that stops it, but that might help, it's a barrier that'd be visible.
Okay. And the background checks, yours, I see you signed off, so there's no concerns there.
Correct.
So, so if it's, yeah, just goes through my hearing, he's right, if it's a permanent fence, it's a site plan, and it's gotta go back to planning anyway, so.
I'm sure the owners would be glad to pay for that, so that would be... No comment back there, I see. Sorry, I couldn't resist. I thought about not, but I couldn't resist, so.
Tony's just got back from vacation.
Yeah. So, anyone wish to make the motion that Matt has...
I'll make that motion.
I'm sorry, yes. Anything, we have to close the hearing first. Anything else you want to say during the public hearing? Anybody else wish to speak during the hearing? Okay, I will close the public hearing and turn it over for motion.
I'll make the motion. I'll make Matt's motion that we allow the alcohol to be served inside the building and on the patio.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions, comments from trustees? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Aye. Close, motion carries. So that part is all set, so.
Okay.
If you have further questions about what you have to do going forward, give Mr. Grace a call, he'll.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, we'll go to item five, Village Attorney and Village Administrator's report, item A, update on the Jefferson Crossing project.
I'll just report, we had a good meeting, uh, last week with the developer. And the direction the project is moving at this point is that with respect to the TIF funding, the public improvements would be financed through a, a grant from the village. That's really tied just to undergrounding the, um, electric power lines.
Utilities.
Utility lines and redo, redoing the village's, uh, portion of the parking lot. So we, we would be providing a grant to the developer to address those costs. The private development itself, the, the developers building that entire project, to the extent there are TIF funds involved with that. And there, and there are proposed to be TIF funds involved for that. At this point, the direction appears to be structuring that entirely as a pay-as-you-go TIF, uh, agreement. Meaning the would not be required to borrow any money upfront to finance that. The developer would finance that cost fully upfront and, and then would have the opportunity to, to recover costs over time from, from the project. So, that seems to be a approach, an approach that will work for both parties. We're still working on nailing down some costs that we need to finalize before we can really finalize an agreement. But we hope to have, uh, at least, uh, those costs and an outline of the basic structure of the agreement ready to prepare to the board at your next meeting.
Hopefully.
We hope.
Any questions?
That's great news. I'm, I was really glad to hear about the pay-go. So you did have a very good meeting.
We had a good meeting.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we'll go to item B, discussion possible action regarding recent compliance checks of alcohol beverage license establishments.
So, so Steve, there's a, an email that came from Jenny about the compliance checks. And then I put on everyone's, uh, table of the resolution the board passed last year about compliance checks, so it's up for discussion by the board.
Okay, so I'm gonna through, go through the violations that we had so that it's public record and people that are watching on TV can be aware of this. At Bill's Food Center, the cashier checked the ID which indicated the buyer was 19 and still sold to the buyer. At Charlie's on Main, the waitress never asked for an ID, never carded him, served him a beer, said she was busy. At Headquarters Bar and Grill, bartender never asked for an ID, served two people that were in there, took payment. Bartender said he was busy, never asked for an ID. Uh, these were all cited by the way Ace's main tab. Bartender never, never asked for an ID, uh, served the buyer a beer, exchanged funds, said she was busy. And did not card him because she was busy working long hours. And at Maria's Pizza, waitress asked for an ID compared to a sign they had on the wall that indicated under 21 until today's date, which is 1998. That sign is new and Maria's believes the customer had changed the year on the sign as the year is a Rolodex style knob. The sign was near the customer's side of the counter. Uh, waitress was cited. Uh, the sign, that sign's been removed and they're doing their old handwritten sign. So those are where that happened. Uh, some businesses were closed, not able to check. Chocolate Caper, Firefly, Legends of Bergamot and Celebration Bank, which no longer has a liquor license. So.
So I went back, um, and looked at our records since, uh, 2009. Some years we were robust in doing them, prior to my arrival, and, and some we weren't. But Bill's has been cited four times, Headquarters has been cited four times. And I found interesting that Charlie's on Main's only been open since 2015. He's already been cited twice.
Yeah.
Maria's, that was their first time and Ace's Main Tap is their second time as well, so. I don't think that being busy should be an excuse to not card. Um, that's part of the job. So I was disappointed to hear that from a number of the, the staff on board there, so. I guess now it's up to the board on, uh, what they wanna do for these businesses that are continually failing, which is, in my opinion, Bill's and Headquarters, so.
Do you have a recommendation, chief?
Well, I mean, I know the ordinance says they need to come in and explain, uh, to you guys why this continues to happen. So I think at a minimum, they should be doing that and then the board can certainly decide what they wanna do from that point on. But, you know, all the staff there was extremely apologetic and, you know, they used the excuse that they were busy. And again, I don't think that's something that the board should, should consider as a viable excuse whatsoever.
I agree.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
So I'll make a motion to do that at the next meeting if the agenda allows.
Now, did we have, uh, the person from all against start at public safety or come right to the board meeting?
Public.
Public safety, right.
That's fine.
Should we follow that same procedure, right?
I, I prefer not to do it on the 13th because Mike Slavsky's.
Well, no, I mean.
But yeah, we could, we could have, come to the committee, it's okay with Jenny.
I just didn't wanna wait too long.
No, I agree. I, I'm just trying to be consistent in where they start.
No, if we wanna be consistent, we should go to public safety.
Yeah. Although the difference there was that, that was more because of how our officer was treated than.
Yeah.
A second offense, so we could start right here if you want to, which I'm fine with too.
I think it should come back to the board.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I do too, as I think about it.
So I'll, I'll put on the 20th, that's okay then.
And, um, apparently the state has taken away our, our possibility of citing the agent. Is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
We, yeah, we, well, we, we can only cite the server. I don't.
That's correct.
We can't cite the license holder.
Because we had talked about citing the agent on a second offense and 12-month rolling period, but I, I think has some impact at $600 some dollars, we can't do it. So, we have to, I think, come up with some other consequence for doing this. I've got some in mind.
Yeah, well, I, I haven't thought about this deeply lately, but my only, my, I think the only options are, you know, the, the, the discussion process. That you're talking about inviting them to come in and have a discussion about compliance that may provide some help. Beyond that, and from an enforcement standpoint, uh, the only thing that I'm aware of that we have as an available tool is kind of a, a more extreme response. Which is to consider suspension or revocation. So, then you'd have to schedule it for a hearing to establish grounds and then make a decision about whether to either suspend the license for some period of time. And, and that obviously gets to be a more serious, um, process with more serious consequences for them. But certainly that maybe needs to be part of the conversation, that that's a possibility and, and the board will need to figure out when that line is crossed such that that's when, what you decide you need to do next.
So suspension is a fairly lengthy process too, even for a short amount of time?
But, well, the, you, you have to give notice of a hearing and have a hearing. We have to prove grounds for suspension and then, and then you have to make a decision about whether to suspend or not. So, there's a little bit of work involved in, in getting to that point. And, and, and it's about the same amount of work to get to that point, whether you plan to suspend the license or revoke it. I mean, you still have to do the same amount of work to prove your case, uh, to, to do either a suspension or a revocation.
Is this legitimate grounds to suspend?
My understanding is that it would be, but we'd obviously verify that before proceeding.
Yeah.
Was there a second to Jerry's motion?
There wasn't.
Oh, there was not, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Uh, well, that would, um, Mike indicated we can't do it next week.
Well, just, you can just.
I'll just amend my motion to the 26th.
Yeah, okay. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I'm honored.
Yeah, or.
I'll second it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And who would you be inviting to that meeting?
The, the agent.
The agent.
From Headquarters and Bill's.
Yeah.
I've gotta believe that, um, that we can work this out without, without having to take enforcement action. We're a small town. This should make, this should make sense to everybody.
Yeah, I guess I don't agree. I think a made census wouldn't happen. I mean, we had bartenders not checking IDs, one checked it and still went right ahead. I think we need to send us, personally send a strong message, this is done. You card people and you do it every single time. And, uh, we get, we get their attention because right now the bartender gets the, the citation, it's what's $345, I think, something like that.
Something like that. And I've already had a personal conversation with Mr. Bush at Headquarters about these types of things, so.
Yeah, prior to this offense, right?
Correct.
Yeah. You know, it seems like he keeps ignoring what needs to be done, as do all these others, so.
I, I don't know, I, I don't mean to interrupt. I don't know that he's ignoring. Um, I think he does a good job of training and then I think it's on his staff. For, for whatever reason, some of his staff members just aren't following along. And I think the last time he fired the staff member that did it, so.
Yeah, and I'm not sure what they need to do to get their attention, but something needs to happen.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, if we're going out the first time of this year to do this and we had all these violations, how often is it happening outside and we do compliance? Well, that's happening all the time, I would guess.
Yeah.
So it's not like we fix it for the two times a year we do compliance checks. It needs to be fixed pretty consistently, in my mind, all the rest of the time. But that means in my, they don't have a license on a Friday or Saturday night. I think that'll wake them up.
How long would the suspension be in effect?
That would be up to the board to decide. You, you, you'd hear the evidence and then make that decision.
Thank you.
A suspension of, at a place like Headquarters of even one night is pretty serious.
Or Bill's.
Or, or one day, yeah. I mean, it's, it's a big deal.
Plus, it should be embarrassing. I don't know if it will be or not, but it should be, I think.
So not to jump the gun, but say that we did suspend for a day. What's, what's the process or is there a responsibility that falls to the village or to the business owner to remove all the alcohol from the premises for that day? Or, or how is that actually executed?
That's a great question. Um, I don't know. I've never had a license suspended.
Yeah.
I've had one revoked once, but I've never seen one suspended.
Check it out.
We'd have to figure that out. I mean, uh, maybe we could structure the suspension so that it was, you know, no sales. No sales, no service.
Yeah.
But, you know, storage would still be permitted or something.
Yeah, I think it's a little trickier when you have a business that does other things besides just alcohol sales, such as food and, I mean, well, both of them are food.
Yeah.
So, they could still be open serving food and Bill's could still be open selling groceries. But in terms of removing everything from the premises, that would be, we'd have to think through how to manage that.
I mean, I would be looking at no sales of alcohol, not removing all the product. That would be a nightmare.
Right.
That would be hard to do though.
No sales?
Yeah. I mean, if everybody didn't know what, that, you know. I think, th- this is the first time for Bill's Foods.
No.
No, it's fourth.
It's the fourth time, yeah.
No, as long as there were signs at the entrance, signs in the entrance doors, I mean, let's hope we don't have to get to that extreme.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm optimistic that if we bring them in, we tell them what we're gonna do if this continues, that the, uh, certainly Bill's and certainly, uh, Headquarters, I mean, I know both those owners and those, us do. And they'll take that pretty seriously, so.
So I agree with you.
Yeah.
A hundred percent. I always like to, like, but, I always like to be prepared with, with, uh, how I would go about enforcing something if I'm going to, if I'm going to state that I would.
Right.
I, I wouldn't want to state that I was gonna do something that I find out later I can't do or that I'm not willing to do. So, I agree with you, Jerry, a hundred percent that I, I don't think we're gonna have to get to that point. But if we're gonna have a conversation that leads us down that road, I'd like to know where the road ends before I have the conversation.
So here are my questions. So, um, it's clear the board would like to invite the agents, the operators, to attend the meeting to have a discussion about the compliance issue. It sounds like you would like to know, you might wanna know from me at that meeting, whether or not there are grounds to pursue a suspension, for example.
Yeah.
Do you want the agenda to include, at that meeting, as a potential decision point for the board, whether to initiate suspension proceedings? Or do you not want the agenda to include that as a possible point of discussion and decision? You just wanna show the discussion with the operators at this point without the potential action item relating to initiating the suspension process? Or you wanna have that option on the table for that meeting?
So, for me personally, I don't wanna have that conversation unless I plan on doing it. And if, and before I can plan on doing it, I need to know what it is. What, what exactly, if, if at that meeting I decided to suspend the license for a day or for a week, what, what action would we be responsible for as a board? What action would the owner be responsible to comply? Uh, how would that compliance be policed? All of those questions.
You wanna know, you wanna know all that at that meeting?
I wanna, I wanna, I would like to know all of that before I entertain that as an option, me personally.
So if that's where everyone is, then my suggestion would be that we break this discussion into two pieces just to manage costs. The first would be the, the actual face-to-face discussion with the operators. Then you can decide, depending on how that meeting goes, whether you want to, um, then direct me and other staff to gear up for another discussion at another meeting about what enforcement looks like, what your options are, how it would be implemented and all that. So that you could then make that decision of whether you wanted to pursue that. Cause it, it, it seems to me that there's gonna be some time and effort getting ready for that discussion. That if you, if you think there's a chance you're not even gonna wanna have that discussion, then let's hold off.
I don't really think this, it saddens me to say this, but I don't think this is the last time we're gonna be talking about this. I, I, I think it would have been a shorter report if you'd have told us who didn't fail and was open. And that's a sad statement to make. So I think we have to be prepared. If you're gonna have an ordinance in place, you're gonna have to be prepared to enforce it. And for me to be prepared to enforce the ordinance, I need to know what that means.
So you want it that, does the board want us to be ready for that at the next, at that meeting where you have these folks in? So we can explain that to you. Explain what the enforcement process looks like and how it work and. Just trying to make sure we're ready for what you want us to be ready for.
That would be my preference. I don't, I may be in the minority, I don't know, but our, our ordinance kinda says that's what we do. Now, you look at the ordinance, item four, fail two or more within a rolling 12-month period, gives the policy to the board to consider the initiation of proceedings for suspension, revocation or non-renewal of such establishments alcohol beverage license.
I would, I would agree. Um, I frankly, I would like to craft that discussion in a way that would be, um, very disciplinary. I would like to have that meeting be a situation where the statement was made. Please don't put us in the position where we have to suspend the license and put the burden on them. So they know that next time it happens, it will happen. Now, I don't know how to speak to Matt's point about getting ready for the meeting, but, uh, um, again, I was just gonna put the burden on the owners or the agent and make them speak to that. I think I'd like to hear what they have to say in response to that question.
Well, you can look at it as this is gonna be a future need anyway, so.
Right.
Yeah.
I agree with Jeff. We're gonna need it someday.
You might as well get the information when you want it, so.
Yeah, I, I think so too. And, uh, personally, we need to take a strong stance. I mean, the burden's on them already. It has been since they got the license and they, they don't take it seriously enough. And I know it's not easy to have employees and have them all do this properly. But, um, if it means every day they have to remind them to card and they need to do it.
Well, if they're looking at a situation where, uh, they have to suspend an employee or let an employee go that possibly only makes $50, $60 a day, as opposed to losing $2,000 or $3,000 worth of liquor revenue a day. I think they're gonna learn, they're gonna take this burden pretty, pretty seriously, so. But I think we start here. We start with this, you know, have a meeting, tell them what we're gonna do. And maybe we take it a step further. We actually talk about, uh, future instances and be ready, as the chief indicated, for what we're gonna do. Fourth or fifth infraction is how many days? One, three, five? And then at some point, you revoke. And that way we've got it in writing. We can give it to them as part of the application.
Well, yeah, but now you're talking about a policy.
You're talking about a point system and kind of a rewrite of your, modifying your regulations to some extent.
All students.
Uh, well, uh, the, the way the current process is structured, you have the ability to decide now whether you wanna pursue, I mean, you need to hear back from us to verify, yeah, you, based on these two violations or these three violations, you have legal grounds to proceed. But you can decide now what, what, how you wanna handle that. You don't, you're not bound by a point system that tells you what to do.
Okay.
I think the board talked about that, Jerry, and decided to do this resolution instead.
Yeah, I think I remember now. They wanted to leave it vague to give the board some latitude.
Right.
What Matt said just jogged my memory, so I, I guess I'm good at that.
So, my, my suggestion is that, given the discussion I've heard, is that the agenda include, um, three things. One would be the discussion with the operators. Second would be a presentation by staff regarding, uh, the enforcement options, what they look like, what it would, what it would entail. And then third, the board can decide whether it wants to pursue any further action at this time with respect to any of the various license holders. And you, and, and so you could, you could make those three decisions or you could do those three things at that meeting. One nice thing about that is that it does send the message to everyone that, I mean, you're gonna follow your policy, which, and your policy says consider the initiation. Doesn't say you will initiate, but you will, you will look at the facts. You'll try and understand what the situation is and make a judgment about whether now is the right time to pursue, um, suspension or revocation.
So is Matt's plan sound okay?
Sounds good to me and I got a feeling that Mike will be getting a call tomorrow from Bill Leibig. And there'll be an article in the paper about this.
Probably.
Right, Mike?
I would think so.
If the streaming is working, Bill will.
Or he, or he'll just write it, be asked, but he probably got enough material, just, he'll just write it.
I was just gonna say, I, the difficulty is getting a hundred percent compliance all the time. It's like go and sin no more would be the result of our, potential result of our hearing if there were a suspension. But how do you get back into the good graces of the village board? I mean, there, Jerry talked about a point system, some way of measuring progress toward no, 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 uh, underage serving. It just seems to be, there's a little bit of a difficulty there, just given human nature.
Well, the, if I could speak to that briefly, I, I think the, the, part of the answer is, I think the way that the village's, uh, policy is currently structured, it's, it's, you know, if you're clean for a rolling 12-month period, that kinda gets you back to a safe place, I think. It's.
It does, but we, you know, we go back, like I went back to '09 and we count, you know, all the prior ones. And this is, you know, that's part of the continual process of learning and then you still have that history of, okay, well, we did have some violations, where are we at now?
I, I understand there's a history there, but I think in terms of actual enforcement, like a suspension process, I think we need to show that we had two violations within a 12-month period.
Right.
So you have to, you have to be able to show, you know, we have a 12-month period where we didn't have two violations.
Right.
So there is, I mean, there is room in that system for making some mistakes and not having suspension or revocation result. You can make, you can, you can make one mistake during the year that you get caught for. If you make two, the way the system is set up now, you face the possibility of. If you make two, the way the system is set up now, you face the possibility of enforcement action. So that's the way it's, and, and I know it's, it's impossible to maybe wipe this slate clean. There isn't really a way to do that, but, but, but that's the system we've got.
What I'll do, maybe even just for the next meeting, I'll just put in your mailboxes, I'll go back and find the minutes before this was adopted, because we had the same discussion back then, and a lot of things we're talking about, maybe refresh your memories. We kind of went through this and didn't want to do a point system and stuff like that, I believe, so...
Chief, can you think of a way that, say I was a bar owner and I wanted to do my own compliance checks? Is there a way for me to do that without getting myself into trouble?
Um...
Like, could I call you up and say, hey, chief, I'd like to do an internal compliance check, but I'm trying to police my own staff. This, this doesn't count.
No, I'd have to think about that. You know, maybe if, you'd have to be awfully certain that your underage folks weren't consuming alcohol, you know what I mean? That, that's a tricky one. I'd have to have to do some research on that to see if they can do that. I mean, obviously, they can do it without us knowing, and, you know, that would be on them, but...
Would you, would you consider that? And maybe even consider if, you know, if a business owner wanted to call you up on their own and proactively ask for an underage stop, underage check, if you'd be willing or within good policing, if you could go in there as an assistant to them, as opposed to as an officer of enforcement, to where they, they wouldn't have to be afraid of a penalty.
Or, or they could just have anybody do that. It wouldn't have to be a police officer.
That was my concern, is what if somebody, like, what if somebody underage actually does buy alcohol? And chief said, as long as they don't consume it, I wouldn't be in trouble, but I feel like I just crossed a...
Well, yeah, I mean, you're, you're on the line. You, you can possess as a minor alcohol, right? So if it's open intoxicants or that type of thing, you can't have it as a minor. So I, I think there's some legal questions we'd have to answer before we, we did that.
I, I know if I was a bar owner, I'd like to be able to do that. So it's something I'd like to offer, if it's possible. If it's not possible, it's not possible, but...
I'd, I'd have to do some research to give you a better answer on that one. As far as if they asked me if we could supply that and then not have it go on their record, I mean, that would be a matter of us getting the resources, but that could be a possibility as well.
I may not remember this correctly, but I think my quick trip, because they were here on the hot seat before, and I think they said they did their own compliance checks.
Yeah, I don't know how they said they did that.
So you might want to check with them and see how they did that.
Well, you could just send someone in that's underage, but they have an ID that says that they're underage.
What?
That could be a pretty simple test.
Yeah, that would be one way of verifying IDs without actually buying it.
I, I think, I think their biggest, biggest problem is, you realize that every, I'm not making excuses, I'm not gonna excuse it all here, but you realize even every board meeting we have, we approve new operator license, that, that the staff turnover in these places, again, I'm not making excuses, is tremendous. And I, I think being an owner, trying to get everybody, like, when, when you shop at Bills, you've seen this, you know, there's a, there's an underage kid who's a cashier, right? I've never seen where the kid will actually step back, physically step back from the cashier and call the adult over to, to take your liquor through there. So I'm just surprised that it's happening at Bills of all places.
Bills does that?
I know that, and, and that's what surprised me. I just think it's constant training of the new, and, and the current employees, and how you get there, maybe Jeff's got the idea, but I didn't, Brian's right, this is gonna continue to happen, unfortunately, because there's so much, there's so much staff turnover in our places, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and I think that what my sense is for this board is, you know, the real challenge is trying to balance, you know, you're wanting to, to recognize what looks like good efforts by the owner that just sometimes don't work, on the one hand, and, and on the other hand, figure out where do you need to draw the line to send the message that you're, you're not doing well enough, you need to, you need to do better. And it's not, and I, I don't have a great answer for this. I mean, I think part of this is gonna, part of this is the discussion process that you're asking to have with people. You want a, you want a conversation so that you can hear from them. Now, but, but, but my guess is, you know, I mean, I've heard, I've, I've heard the, I've heard the speech before, so we're gonna hear a familiar speech about how difficult it is. So the question for the board, I think, is, well, at what point do you say, okay, that's, you know, that's just not good enough? And I don't know if it's two in a 12-month period, or three in a 12-month period, or two with a bad explanation. I, I just don't know what the right formula is.
One thing that would help me, Brian, when we get the report, if we could go back to when, as long as you have data, and list the year and who had violations, so we can kind of see if people had violations and then maybe get it cleaned up, or, I mean, I don't know where QuickTrip is, but we've never had problems for a while, they haven't recently had it.
That's the report since 2009.
Yeah, if we had that for that discussion, I think that would be, would be a benefit to take a look at and kind of see what the history is, because we're talking about the ones that had violations, and there's a number that haven't had violations, so it's working some places, apparently, or they just got lucky that night.
But I do think at QuickTrip, I know right by the counter now, you have to present your driver's license, no matter how, how old you are. I think they have it from 12 to whatever you are.
Yeah.
But the problem is, is like, people misread the ID. That's, that's what's happened in the past.
Right.
And that's, yeah.
And I think you have to compare apples to apples. I mean, you're talking about a convenience store and a bar, you know, where the, where the volume is different and, you know, the turnover is different there as well. So I think there's some challenges. The pace is different, absolutely. I mean, when they say they're too busy, I'm sure they are busy, but that's not an excuse to look at, not even look at an ID, so...
Yeah, I mean, that solves a problem. They look at IDs, right? And do it right, that solves a problem. For the most part, I would think, and that's not happening, so. And Mike is right, it's difficult with the turnover of employees.
And you probably look at their driver's license really quick, too, and if they don't read the right year...
I, I can guarantee you the underage licenses, you can tell the difference. It's very clear when somebody is underage, so...
It says right on it, right?
It's a different ID completely.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, absolutely.
Or portrait as opposed to...
And you're not, you're not using like a, like a fake ID or something.
The real IDs, absolutely.
They're their real IDs.
Yes.
They've got to look at them.
We're not trying to trick them. We're using the real IDs.
Yeah. So do we need to take any action, or just slowly agree to go back?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna invite, we're gonna invite them, excuse me, headquarters in Bills, the agents, to the March 20th meeting. At that meeting, we'll have Matt's memo.
Well, we'll have a presentation of some kind.
I'm, I'm gonna try to find the, the minutes when this got generated. I think this will be, I think it'll be helpful to the board to see the past conversations. Brian's gonna think about the self-policing.
I'll also bring copies of that.
Yeah.
And I'll actually bring the board a picture of the IDs, too, so you can see what they look like.
Yeah, perfect. Good idea.
And then, yeah, then I'll put Brian's report in there, too, as well.
Yep. Does that sound like the way to go, we all deal with that?
You know, the only thing I'm having a little problem with in this, I'll let Brian speak to this, is if I'm in his position, and I send somebody, even if it's with the understanding that this doesn't count, if I send somebody in and they end up buying liquor illegally, I feel like I would have a responsibility to do something about it then, or don't you...
Well, that's supposed to be a controlled environment, so...
Right.
But, but that just tells me that, hey, it's still not working. Whatever you're doing, it's not working.
I, personally, I'd just like to take, not jeopardize Brian's position and just have, you know, you could get your own underage people to go in there. You must, you can find a couple of kids to walk in and just try it once in a while, I would think.
Well, that's the whole question. I'm not sure what the legality of that would be.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll hear from Brian on this next meeting. He'll have it all figured out.
There is a motion on the floor. Can you remind me? So we should probably vote on it, which is to have them come to the March 20th meeting.
Okay. Hey, wait a second.
Yep.
Okay. So are there motions to have them come to that meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
All, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item C, discussion, possible action regarding park board membership and possibly revising that ordinance.
So when we were going through this last year, we did not know what it says, but it's, we wanted to bring this up to the board for discussion. It says, all members of the park board should be residents of the village of Oregon. And we want to make sure that that's what the board wants, or do you, do you care, for example, if the, because you have all these appointments from the school district and chamber, if they're a non-resident, is, is that a big deal in the eyes of the village board?
Is that, is it currently an issue? Do we have someone who doesn't live in Oregon on the park board?
Yes.
Oh.
Well, and, and it's gonna happen. It's gonna happen at some point in the future. Someone from the school district, or someone from the chamber of commerce, or one of the organizations will probably want to, and then they won't, they will not be the village resident. You know, this will, it will come up again. And, and it's just something we, we just, we didn't catch that when we were doing the ordinance last year.
What does Doug think?
Well, there's, there's a bit of inconsistency, because the Historic Preservation Commission, which I also sit on, has members from outside of the village as well.
Yeah, you only have, you can have two, right? Yep.
So I'm not sure what, how this serves the, the community. There could be expertise that we would want to take advantage of.
Yeah. So if that's the case, then we would need to revise this.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I mean, just take, take out that sentence. Take out that sentence.
The, the thing with HPC is, we, we still have the majority of the members have to be village residents, so you probably still want to do something like that with the park board, that the majority, well, I think you do, maybe, maybe not, would want to be village residents, so...
Could you say within the Oregon school district? That encompasses a larger area?
I mean, the park board cannot spend any money. It isn't, they're, they're recommending body to the village board.
So a couple of different options. One would be to, yeah, change it to say, all members shall be residents within the boundaries of the Oregon area school district. Another would be to say, like what we do with historic preservation, to say, you know...
I think it's no more than two, I think.
No more than two members may be, you know, non-village residents. So there's a variety of ways to approach this. Or you can leave it as it is, and just say everyone has to be a, a resident. The, the challenge with that is you do have, like, your student members, for example, from a broader school district, that has boundaries bigger than the...
Oh, I didn't think that was true.
You know, and, and...
That's a good point, man.
Well, the Rotary Club, there's no, there's no guarantee that everybody in Rotary's lives in the village.
That's what I'm saying, chamber, school district, yep.
Most of them live within the district, the school district, though.
Yeah, I like Genie's recommendation, school district.
It seems like an easier fix.
I mean, if there's somebody who wants to be on the park board and they don't meet residents' requirements for the village, I think it's a shame not to have one there. Because it's not like these positions are easy to fill all the time.
The issue is, we can't get any applications, right? So it seems that we, if we don't expand it, we're gonna be short members, so...
We're doing okay, we're doing okay now, but, but going back to Doug's point, by HPC, I mean, honestly, we'd be lost without Earl and Kai's direction in there.
Yeah. The only downside that I see, to your point, is somebody would get on the park board without a passion for the parks because they don't live here. I mean, other than that, I can't see any downside to letting somebody from outside of the village be on the park board, and I can't imagine somebody volunteering their time to go and be part of the park board who, who didn't have passion for parks.
No. They'd soon get tired of the long meetings, so...
I think I'd support Genie's recommendation as well, that we stick with the school district.
Okay. Do you want a motion on that?
Yeah, that's fine, Genie.
Sure. Yes, please.
Yeah, we need a motion on that, please.
Sure, so I make that motion that we change the wording to be all members of the park board should be residents of the Oregon area school district.
I'll second. Thank you. Need any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All, motion carries. Thank you.
So we'll, we'll bring it back. That's...
Thank you. Okay, discussion, possible action regarding amending the municipal code to require two-thirds vote of board members present, or a two-thirds vote of full board to suspend rules for first and second readings of minutes.
Yeah, and the reason I, I have this on, or I asked Mike to put this on, is that your code is unclear right now about, about that. Could you hand me your board?
Yeah, I will. I mean, I meant you said that it's, it's in two places, it's not...
Well, there's one provision that's just a general provision regarding suspending the rules. And that provision, it's clear that to suspend the rules generally... Sorry, just give me a second. Here we go. So there's a general provision relating suspension of the rules that makes it clear that you need a two-thirds vote of all the members of the board to suspend the rules. But with respect to the ordinance reading issue, it's, it seems different. Yeah. Just gotta find that. Oh, where is that? Here we go. So it says, the village board shall adopt no ordinance unless the proposed ordinance has had two full readings before the board at two separate meetings of that body. And then it says, a motion to temporarily suspend the rules may dispense with the required two readings. And why it says that, when you've got a later provision that talks about suspending the rules, it says you need a two-thirds vote, and this one just says, a motion to suspend the rules may dispense with, I can't tell what's the intent there? Is the intent that you can waive the rules and just have two readings at one meeting and adopt an ordinance at one meeting? You could do that just by a simple majority? Or, or do you want the rule to be no? If we're gonna do that, we want that to be a two-thirds vote of the full board's membership, so you've got to have, how many, that's five?
Yeah.
You've got to have five votes to do that. So...
That, that member's, that's the difference, that member's present, but the full...
Full membership. So my, this, this, my request to the board is that you consider what you'd like the rule to be on that, so I can make it more clear in your ordinances. When, on this suspension, you want it to be two-thirds vote of the full board, five votes to suspend the rules, to allow the two readings of the ordinance at the same meeting? Or is it, is it adequate to have that be just a simple majority of the members present, which could be as few as three people?
Three.
So, so is it a, is it a rule that we have to have a quorum present to, to take any board action?
Yes.
So a quorum would be four?
And a majority of that would be three. So, so you, the concern is that, I mean, the way the rules are structured, you as a trustee should be able to rely on the idea that there's gonna be an ordinance that gets adopted just at one meeting.
Yeah.
Normally, there's gonna be two meetings where it'll be on the agenda, unless the rules are suspended to allow it to happen more quickly.
And we would need four out of seven to carry a two-thirds vote, five.
Yeah. And, and that's the rule for...
I don't have my turnkey.
Yeah, otherwise, what Matt was saying, we were saying that if you could actually have three board members vote to approve, suspend the rules and adopt the ordinance, with the other members being absent.
I think I, I would like to make a motion that we add the, the language, two-thirds vote of the board to suspend all the rules at all times. So if you found a place where that's not clear, I would make that clear.
I will make it clear. I know how I'm gonna do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would second that.
So there could be a coup in the parking lot, they could knock us off, and they come in here and do whatever they want to do.
Well, believe it or not...
It actually becomes...
I've been reading mysteries lately.
It, it'll be a problem on the most controversial project that comes through the village, where that, that's what always happens, there's some controversial thing and the rules get suspended, and people go crazy.
So, so we're saying that it's gonna take, it will take five of the board members to suspend the rules?
Two-thirds board's vote to suspend the rules. And that, so, the reason I hedged on the word, on the number five, right, is because we currently don't have a sitting seventh board member. So, is a two-thirds vote, assume that the, that the empty chair votes nay, or, or how does that work?
Well, the way the rule reads now, and under your general rule, it's a two-thirds vote of all members of the board. I would interpret that today to mean six.
So, then it wouldn't be five necessarily?
It would be five if you've got a full member slip of seven. Two-thirds of six would then be back down to four. So...
So, two-thirds is the magic number?
Two-thirds of the members. It's two-thirds, yeah.
So, I, so I, to make sure we don't make a, so let's say we adopt this, make sure we don't make a mistake where we have, not a board members present to do this. I, I was gonna try to remember to make sure it's clear on the agenda. It'll say two-thirds of the full board.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Or, I may even put five votes or something.
Five or four.
Yeah, that would be good.
Unless there aren't seven of us, then you would put four.
Right.
So, just so that I'm clear, I just wanna make sure I have the right motion. So, I have Budrow, second of Edredhauer, to amend the municipal code to require a two-third vote of full board.
Yeah.
So, I'm gonna come back with an ordinance.
Okay.
Which will have to have two readings at two separate meetings to approve.
So, then, this motion is just to direct you to...
To draft...
Amend the ordinance and bring it back to your board meeting?
Exactly right.
I have Budrow, or, is that who?
Yeah, does that make sense, the, just directing Matt to amend?
Yeah, Rice, Dragney. Absolutely.
Yeah, Dragney.
That's what she calls me. I like that. She goes, "Hey, Dragney." I feel like I'm in high school. Okay.
Got it.
That's what we're gonna do.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item six is approval of minutes are now before us tonight, which is item seven, which is approval of vouchers. We have vouchers tonight, in amount of seventy-seven thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars and fourteen cents for approval.
So, move. I'll second that, and I have no questions. For Lisa.
Does anyone else have questions on the vouchers? Seeing none, we have a motion second to approve vouchers in the amount of seventy-seven thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars and fourteen cents. Roll call, please.
Staten?
Yes.
Turnier?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Edredhauer?
Yes.
Budrow?
Yes.
Bolling?
Yes.
Thank you. That carries. Item eight is community input. Anybody wish to address the board tonight? Anyone? Seeing none, we will go to item eight.
Okay.
Proclaimations and announcements. Anyone have board comments?
Just a comment that it's not too late to go to Ben Venuto's tonight for their second of two dine-outs for OCRN. So, if you tell him that you're dining out for OCRN, twenty percent of your ticket will come back to help build the food pantry. Tonight. Limited time only.
We kept thinking you were taking us, but...
Should we make a motion?
Actually, I was gonna, but Mike forgot to post it.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Anyone else? Okay, I would mention, I got a call from Wendy Parsons. There's a presentation on climate change at Saint John's Lutheran Church this Sunday at six-thirty to seven-thirty. And there are parts, some of that will include how to get community involvement, and she thought the board might be interested, so I want to let you be aware of that. This Sunday, six-thirty to seven-thirty at Saint John's Lutheran Church. Anyone else? Item B, staff comments. Item one is upcoming meetings. Mr. Race?
So, next Monday, Mike's family will be here to present the final civic campus plan. And I, I have a question in that, in that paragraph there. So, I don't, I don't wanna get ahead of the board on this, but with a lot of help from Lisa and Candy. Ken and Candy went through twenty revisions on this thing for me, this table that we prepared. I have a civic campus plan recommendation, and a little bit of how it ties into the CIP and, and future debt service. So, I don't know if the board wants to see that, or just, or just focus on Mike's presentation next Monday night.
Uh, just a request. If you could touch base with Chief Linsmeyer prior to that...
Sure.
To get some thoughts from him?
Sure.
That might impact your presentation.
Okay.
So, Mike is asking if he wanted to, just the plan, or the plan and the capital improvement plan attached to that?
I love information.
I think more information is...
Okay. I'm happy, sure. Thank you. Then we have the board meeting on March twentieth, committee meetings on the twenty-seventh, and then, just a reminder, there'll be no board meeting on April third due to the election.
Sorry.
And then we have a, a board meeting on April tenth, seventeenth, and then those, we have the special organizational meeting on the eighteenth.
Okay. Lisa, make sure we're all paying attention.
Thank you, Lisa.
Takes us to number ten, communication miscellaneous business. Item eight, two police department new policies, training and victim witness assistance, and possible board actions.
So, move approval. Second.
Thank you. Chief?
Yep, the training guidelines. Again, this goes along with the accreditation process. This basically is the things that we're already doing, but puts down procedures for training coordinators, arrangements, approval process, plans, any kind of remedial training or outside resources. Talks about the annual training requirement to maintain certification, specialized training, how to, how to, how to apply for training, career development, all that stuff is outlined as part of career advancement and training in, in the police department.
But, what I liked, oh, sorry. I say, what I liked about on page five was that, under annual training, that each sworn employee is required to receive in-service, at least annually, I should say, each sworn employee is required to receive in-service training on the agency's use of force, which is, you know, that's obviously in the news. So, I'm glad that we're doing that on an annual basis, you know. Thanks, Brian.
Yep. And then the victim witness, this policy, again, part of the accreditation process, but really, this is making sure that we are adhering to victims' rights, victims' witness rights, making sure we're doing everything we can to protect their rights. It also talks about the coordinator to make sure that we're coordinating with the DA's office and the victim witness there, making sure that we're notifying them of their rights, notifying them of the legal process, and informing them, for example, if it's, you know, their spouse gets arrested for domestic, we're informing them of when they may be released, released from custody in jail, or released from prison, or whatever it might be. And it also ensures that our officers are handing out this information to them on the back, in the back page of it. It is information for victims of crime, and it really outlines every resource that we have available in Dean County to them. And so, this policy ensures that we're getting that information to them appropriately.
Any questions?
One thing that jumped out at me was the compensation fund for victims of crime. Is that local, or is that on a county level? How does...
That's on a county level, yeah.
Has it been used occasionally in, in the village?
I couldn't tell you how much that's been used here. I'm not sure.
Any other questions or comments? Case for motion second to approve police department policies on training and also victim and witness assistance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Item B, library directors monthly and two thousand sixteen annual report. Nikki, you're on. Can we receive the handout?
Yep, um, you all have a paper copy, as well as, um, in your packets, the electronic version of the twenty-sixteen annual report for our library. And, it was a very strong year. We have more than nine thousand registered borrowers. And, it's, I think it's important to also bear in mind that sometimes that family will have just one card. They may not have a card for every single member in the family. Each family decides to do it a little bit differently. So, we really have a very strong participation and use of the library. In fact, we had more than a hundred and thirty-four thousand visits to our library last year, which means lots of traffic and lots of questions, more than ten thousand reference questions, so, so those more in-depth questions where you need to research something. Our program attendance continues to grow, particularly those for all ages, which here are referred to as other. This uses, um, it's sort of an enhanced version of a template that comes from the DPI. So, that's where the language might be a little confusing, but other also means all ages. We, our wireless internet use continues to grow. We had a hundred, or, I'm sorry, forty, more than forty-five thousand separate logins to our free Wi-Fi. You'll see that there's a breakdown of income sources in the, in the report. I will point out that that can be somewhat confusing because of the way that the state records this. This is not a balance sheet, and this is not a, a budget. So, when funds, gift funds that are more than a year or two old, if we had been saving those for a particular purpose, if those get used, then they become other income in that year for the purposes of this report. So, you'll see that it looks like we got, we received slightly more money than we spent, wherein, whereas in reality, we've been spending down those gift funds to meet the public's needs. Overall, though, visits continue to grow over time. And, our, on the back flap of the report, you'll see a little visual on the collection that we have. The darker purple there indicates that we have a pretty consistent collection size, physical collection size, for the last ten years. Bit over fifty thousand physical items, but the online collection continues to grow. The physical collection is, of course, limited by the space that we have. If you look at the further breakdown on the circulation by collection within the library, on the latter pages, you'll see that whenever an area of the library gets too crowded, circulation will go down in that area because no one can see or find things. So, in fact, I just learned today that for the first two months of the year, the two areas that we saw the greatest decrease in circulation, which was not that great compared to other libraries, but where we did see some decrease last year, we were able to come up with some temporary fixes with shelving to try to make things more visible. And, those collections have bounced back due to that. So, how we make things available makes a big difference.
Great.
Yeah. And, um, if we look at system-wide circulation, we're doing really great. When the economy is perceived as doing well, circulation decreases a little bit, even though, over the last twenty-five years, circulation throughout the state is drastically up, with, while the overall population's staying approximately static. So, good trends for us. Any questions on the actual annual report itself, or any of the other numbers?
That's great. Questions?
Thank you.
All right, fantastic. Um, just a couple more things. I wanted to share with you some exciting posters that you may see around in the next month or so. They're part of a, um, a, an outreach effort related to National Library Week, which is the second week in April. And, you'll see this online, and then you may see these around the library or around the village. I don't know where the camera really shows, but this poster says, "Because access equals opportunity. Oregon Public Library dedicated to providing exceptional service to the entire Oregon community since nineteen-ten." So, we've been around a long time. And then, this one, and there's many versions of this, says, "Because five out of five doctors agree, reading aloud to children supports brain development. Nourishing, Oregon Public Library nourishing young minds and storytimes and beyond since nineteen-ten." And, following this, I would like to put in a plug for our Paw Patrol one thousand books before kindergarten party that we're having this Saturday from ten until noon. I don't know how familiar you are with the plucky pups of, pups of Paw Patrol, but they're like rescue dogs in training, firefighters and, um, other emergency personnel, police pups in training. And, we're going to have Chase, one of the most exciting pups of the Paw Patrol, in person, be making guest appearance. The fire department and the police department are participating. If all goes well, we may have, um, a real live canine there. And, um, yeah, we're really looking forward to it. This is sponsored by the Oregon Brooklyn Lions Club, and this helps us get the word out about our thousand books before kindergarten program, which encourages kids to read a thousand books or more before they begin kindergarten, so that they're ready to start school on a good foot.
Great. Thank you. Any questions?
Okay.
We run compliance checks, make sure we're on the page to check out the votes.
No comment.
I was just thinking, just been quiet.
I had to say something sooner.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I thought he dozed off. I guess not.
Okay, item C is community cleanup, April eighth and ninth. Do you want to comment on that, Judy? Uh, this, but you have to come to the mic, you know that. Thank you.
We're so close, Judy.
I'm so close.
Yeah.
It's the Oregon Area Coalition that's putting it all together. So, what we're doing is cleaning up all the parks. And, if anybody wants to clean a park, they're to work, they can call the chamber, or they can also call Dabit the Pool. She's taken the reservations, too. We have already ten out of twenty-six parks that are already filled. So, if anybody would like to get their organizations together, and, let's get the parks cleaned up before, you know, during spring, then we can help with our public works people. So, yeah.
What does cleaning up a park entail?
Entail? We would like to have, um, bring, bring your rakes and everything, and let's clean up the limbs, the, the leaves can go over to the pile. And then, we also have garbage bags and stuff. They bring their own garbage bags, they put them out, and then our wonderful public works people pick them up on Monday morning. Yep.
We actually had, I think it was almost forty kids from the Oregon Youth Wrestling Group. They were out cleaning up some, some areas this weekend. So, it was kind of a last-minute thing that they put together, but I did see some Facebook pictures of kids out doing that and having a good time, you know. So, we appreciate that as well.
So, if you can tell me which parks they cleaned up, we can take them probably off the list.
I knew you were going to ask that. I will have to find that out.
Okay. That'd be great. Thank you.
Thanks, Judy. Appreciate your efforts on this. Item D, two thousand seventeen master calendar review. A list of things for staff and us.
Peggy is actually getting everyone the new mics, just so you know. I mean, if you see that, it's number fourteen for this quarter, and we think they're working well, so we're gonna order for everybody.
Do you recommend them, Darlene? The new mic? You don't like it?
Yeah, oh, okay, we should, well, you don't like it, Darlene?
Pardon?
You don't like them?
What?
The, the new mics?
The new lights?
No.
Microphones.
Mics, mics, oh, oh, yes, they're very great.
Okay, good, we'll order them then. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Item E, food pantry update?
That was, that was an email from Randy. Wanted to just thank Randy and Jeff for their continued work on the food pantry.
So, Randy Glace had fundraised, all right. Notes that, in addition to the Village of Oregon pledging ten thousand dollars toward the new Oregon Area Food Pantry Building, Jeff Budrow and Randy attended and presented at the Town of Dunn board meeting on February twenty-third, and they unanimously voted to contribute ten thousand dollars toward the construction of the food pantry, and they're gonna contact and meet with other municipalities also, ask for a similar contribution. So, good for you.
Thank you.
Many thanks to both.
Thanks to the Town of Dunn, because they didn't have it in their budget, but they went back and did a budget amendment, because they felt that, that was that important.
And, that food pantry will go on the grounds of the Methodist Church on the west side of town, and there's a congressional meeting on March nineteenth, I believe, for the final approval of that by the congregation, so...
Yep, and then a celebration.
The number of steps are getting smaller.
Yeah, we're almost there.
You were, yep.
Almost there.
Good. Okay, item F, discussion possible. Action temporary class fee license for Oregon Hockey Incorporated. Adding ICE event on April eighth, two thousand seventeen, at the Gorman Company, two hundred North Main. Place department background checks were completed on all applicants.
I'll make a motion to approve that. A second.
So, they're having a fundraising activity? Is that what they're doing?
Yeah, I did talk to Dan Hefty today, who's in charge of that. It's, um, it's for their, their hockey proceeds. He did assure me they're gonna JBM security there at the door. They're gonna have a license bar there, as well as a couple other folks that have taken the classes. It's gonna be an adult-only event, so there shouldn't be a whole lot of issue with underage. So, they're gonna stress that as well, because it's adult-only, no kids, so...
Okay, good. Any questions? So, we have motion second on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eleven, reported committees, there are none. Item twelve, minutes now requiring action from the Oregon Area Fire EMS Commission, including February second, two thousand seventeen minutes. So, those are in the packet, and you can see those online if you're watching. Item thirteen, unfinished business, there is none. Item fourteen, new business, is approval pending new operating licenses, as approved by the police department. And, on those, we have ACES main tap, Stacy Dixon, Bill's Food Center, Katie Post, Quick Trip number three oh two, Ryan C., Mayhem's Liquor, Albert F.
So, move.
Thank you. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, that's all set. Thanks for being here. Now, item fifteen, list future agenda items coming our way. And, item sixteen would be a motion for adjournment.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned. Motion carries, word, Jim.